All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order in accordance with the open meeting law. The board states that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. This meeting is also a virtual meeting, and we are being recorded via Zoom. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have our departmental budget hearings as our first order of business, and I want to thank all of our department heads and your support staff who waited as we got through our executive session a little bit late. So we're going to kick it off with our town clerk, our new town clerk. So please come forward. We're joined by the members of our finance committee at this evening's meeting.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
To those who did not have the opportunity to meet her, Susan Duplin is our new town clerk here in her second week. I'm pleased to have her join us. A couple of things, just as I had mentioned in previous hearings, we've asked that the presentations be abbreviated to really the issues and the needs, and so there's only a couple of things that require commentary on this budget, which Ms. Duplin did not prepare. It was prepared by Mrs. Stats in December and January of this year, but she is, I believe, up to speed on the budget and prepared to briefly speak to it. Secondly, Madam Chair, through you, I'm just going to ask if there's anybody on the Zoom who is a member of the finance committee, if you could just raise your hand so we could just note that you're there. I don't see anybody, but I just want to confirm that. Okay. Madam Chair, through you to the town clerk.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. You're having me. I finally got to meet all of the finance committee members. Thank you. And of course, I met you before. So as Mike mentioned, the retired town clerk Laura was nice enough to prepare the budget for me. So, and I reviewed the budget, and basically it's level funded. The only difference is in FY '23, we have three scheduled elections. So we have the September primary, we have the November election, and then we have the town election next year. So she factored in the increase based on those elections. As you know, every other year we have one, and then the opposite year we have additional state elections. The other thing that she factored in on the budget was the poll workers, their hourly rate is $13.50 an hour. The minimum wage went up. So beginning January 1st, 2021, it went up to $14.25. So the two fall elections will have that rate for poll workers. And then come January 1st, 2023, the minimum wage goes up to $15 an hour. So she factored those wages in the budget.
All right. Do we have questions from the members of the board? All set? Questions from the finance committee? Mr. Keller.
I understand there could be a second voting at the, for the SOR. So that would be another election that we would have to do. Is that included in this special budget?
No.
Does it need to be?
Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you. So this election does not, so this budget includes the regular elections scheduled for the upcoming fiscal year 2023. It does not consider any special election, nor does it consider the poll workers that would be required for a third town meeting, which is something that was identified in our last discussion. So the town administrator's budget is carrying the cost for the town, the third town meeting itself as a safeguard in case it were necessary, but this budget will need to be adjusted to reflect the cost of the poll workers at that town meeting when it's held most likely in October or November. If the select board were to proceed with some sort of action that requires a vote at a special election, we would need to fund that at that point, yes.
All set, Mr. Keller?
Thank you.
Any other questions of the finance committee? All set? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Pretty basic. All right. Our next departmental budget is human resources.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Robert Collins, Director of Human Resources. I will keep it brief. The town and its departments continue to punch above its weight. You're performing very well. We're asking for three program improvements in excess. First, as you all may well know, Alison Olson is our very valuable benefits coordinator. We have for the last several years allotted no overtime whatsoever. We have a small amount for straight time, and with the great resignation and all the challenges we've been facing lately, it's in a position where she earns comp time. That sort of self-perpetuates a problem in terms of our being able to serve the departments that therefore serve the public. What I'm asking for is that her hours increase from 30 to 35, if you are a full-time employee, her wage rate will not change, just her hours. She will be taking an additional five hours, and that should help address some of the needs of this problem. I would also like to point out that over the last several years, the level of responsibility that she's been taking on has increased each and every year in a very proper way. The second is put as a $25,000 increase relating to professional services. It can rarely be broken down into two areas. The first is $15,000. As we all know, our long-serving police chief and public safety director, despite my best efforts, is still planning on retiring, and it'll be a heartfeltly in task for replacement. We are looking to get an outside group or an agency to come in here and do that task. After consulting with the Mass Municipal Association Human Resources, as well as some other connections, including Suffolk University courses that I took, it is a relatively conservative reasonable number for a chief's search. Now, the number is dependent upon the number of folks that apply and the parameters of per seeking. Certainly, it should be under that, and that's what the hope is, that any money is certainly not to spend. But that is a solid, we hope to be a solid number. The $10,000 is for salary survey. Again, in consultation with the Mass Municipal Association Human Resources Group, of all the other HID orgs as well, as well as those that I've worked closely with, I don't believe that we would be in a position, and I'm not asking, to do a comprehensive salary survey. So instead, I'm actually looking to do a targeted salary survey. This would be 10 to 13 positions based upon the amounts that I've been told. It would come in at $10,000. That would obviously be put out for finance in terms of who we would get, what the parameters would be, and what the targeting that ultimately comes to. And the final thing is for tuition reimbursement. There's a request for $18,196. That's to further the education of our finance director. Like myself previously, she had taken the Suffolk University series of courses supported by the town in municipal leadership and management, and the courses that she took there are all applicable to getting an MPA. The amount requested would reflect four MBA classes to be enrolled in the September of 2022. Everything else is level budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Questions? Members of the board? All set? Members of the finance committee? Questions? Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, the professional services for police chief appointment?
Yes.
Would that include public safety director?
That would depend on whether the town should go in that direction. I don't know. I don't know what the future of that brings. I defer to the town administrator.
Madam Chair, through you. In all likelihood, probably not. It probably would be a separate process.
I did have a couple of questions. Mr. Palmer, you all set? Do you have any follow-ups? Any other questions?
Madam Chair, through you.
From the finance committee? Mr. Gilberto.
Just to let you know, Mr. Johnson has joined.
Okay. Okay. And Mr. Johnson, if you have any questions, just raise your hand or let us know.
Okay.
Mr. Collins, with regard to the $10,000 for the targeted survey, salary survey, I need to explain that.
Yeah, compensation survey. It would be about the salary compensation of employees. Particularly, I believe that we would start off with those employees that are non-members of collective bargaining agreement but are currently either under individual employment contracts or are members of the NDA.
I misunderstood you. I thought you meant in connection with the police chief's position.
So there are two separate ones. One would be the 15 to recruit and help us with the selection process in terms of the chief's successor. And then the other is a broader-based, the amount that I was told was $750 to $1,000 is the norm. You can go more than that, but I wouldn't recommend it. And it would be based on that type of money, 10 to 13 positions that we would be looking at their overall compensation. As we look at, in the last year, we had about 45 openings in 10 different departments. We're all hearing about, you know, even in the post-COVID world, the great resignation. You know, we have proceeded in a certain fashion in terms of compensation and feeling consistently for many years, but without external guidance as to whether or not that is still a viable model going forward. We typically look at a, say, a 1% coal. Generally speaking, coal is never really exactly 1%, it's sometimes less, often more. So if we're going to look at a fair and equitable way of compensating those who serve the public, we need to have an objective outside party come in, look at the overall compensation, look at what is going in other communities of our size or economic status, and make recommendations. Ultimately, it's up to the town administration board to make final decisions on it, but they then become far more informative in terms of what's required.
Mrs. Earlby.
I'm confused by the $25,000 or $24,000 under professional services. Is that both the police chief's search and the salary compensation?
That is correct. 15 of which are for the...
No, I understand that. I initially thought that what you had said was $25,000 to replace all positions and additional $10,000.
No, if I just spoke, I apologize.
No, I don't know whether you did.
No, I was confused about that, too. Mrs. Earlby, do you have any other questions?
No further questions, thank you.
So I just want to focus back in on the chief's retirement. We have to agree to accept his retirement, correct? You're not going anywhere.
Well, to the chair, as a constitutional, oh, there is a limit as to how much we can have somebody work for us when they no longer wish to.
Well, about 10 years.
They know what they wish to. Well, I think someone was asking about the public safety director position, and I believe the way that it is in the charter, it can, it doesn't have to be the police chief. It can be another one of our public safety officials in the city. But also, are we, are we, this search that would be conducted for replacement of the chief, we'd be looking at our own personnel who might want to be promoted to that as well, wouldn't we?
I would be, would not be limited to external candidates, no. You know, we have always, I believe as a town, had a philosophy of promoting from within when the best candidate is from within. And certainly, and I will actually scale a line from the chief, we have one advantage with an internal candidate is it's not the moment that they're interviewing that counts. Every day that they've been on the job, they've been interviewing. So every day, they've made a value statement, and that assists them greatly and mightily in getting a promotion or precludes them from it.
And if this earmark is, it seems like it's rather necessary to move forward on that. What's your, what is the timeline that's projected from beginning to end for that service?
Once this is approved, I would work with the TA, I would work with the chief, I would work with the finance director to get the right perimeter set out so we could solicit bits.
Okay.
And then move from there. The ideal is to get somebody in so that there isn't a gap in service. So that's why we're looking to do it now.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. And we know you do a lot to do employee recognition, and I think that that, I was glad to see that you ramped up on that, I guess, after, as COVID wanes, hopefully, that more of that will happen.
Now that we can actually enjoy each other's company.
See each other's faces, yes. So thank you for everything you do for the town. All right. Our next budget is veterans services. Welcome. Ms. Turner.
On what was in our package, those two changes weren't on it, it was just one for Alison. Did you see that in the package? No? I was just thinking, maybe I looked at the wrong thing.
Good evening, good evening, good morning. Nice to see everybody in person. So the Veterans Department's budget is level funded, and I'm not asking for an increase nor a decrease in finances. Just to give you a quick update, though, just to, we have lost quite a few people through the last year and a half, well, from February 2020 to February 2022, our recipients for just Chapter 115 went from 27 down to 15, nine of whom passing away due to COVID-3 during COVID, excuse me, and three moved.
I'm sorry. Excuse me one moment. There might be a transmission issue going on here.
Certainly. I just want to make sure we set your PowerPoint presentation to share here so that folks can...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I apologize.
I apologize especially.
Especially for what you were, for the content you were telling us. I'm sorry to disrupt you.
Okay, thank you. I will retry, I will go back.
Thank you.
So the goal is for us, it's going to be level funded, but what I wanted to advise you all of is for a little update on the Chapter 115. As of February 2020 to February 2022, the number of recipients have gone from 27 down to 15, with nine of them that had passed away during COVID, and three had moved during the COVID time. The numbers are expected to rise again due to the significant number of veterans that are passing, leaving widows in need of financial assistance due to the loss of their incomes. As of, since December 2020, that, and I keep track of all the funeral homes, local ones anyways, so to date, I've had, from December, excuse me, of 2020, we've lost over 58 veterans themselves, not on Chapter 115, but veterans in general. So that can open up a whole new situation of, once we get information out to them to let them know, you know, we're here for them and keep track of all the widows, there may be quite a few in there that could be in need of the assistance as well, again, due to the loss of, whether it's disability, veterans' disabilities, or monies, or even their social securities. And why do you use complain?
Here we go. It's real.
I'm thinking.
Just HDMI cables, but it's a...
I didn't touch none. Your internet connection is unstable.
It's not used.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we can...
There we go. So what happens is, is, you know, typically, you know, you're looking at two incomes coming in, you know, obviously for a husband and a wife, but especially if they're 100% disabled vets, and we've lost a few of those in this town. What ends up happening is that money, which is roughly about $3,600 a month just in disability alone, that goes away. And so then it's a matter of whether, if the veteran passed away from, passed away from anything that was connected to service, and it mirrors the VA's application, their decision letters, and it mirrors the death certificate, then there's an opportunity for the spouse to get an additional $15 every. So again, we're working on those, we've just worked on three of those, so, and we're waiting on decisions back from the VA on those. So right now, the goal for FY '23 is just to continue, recap these veterans of the deceased veterans regarding the Chapter 115 benefits as well as the VA benefits as well. So we always try to go VA first, federal, and then work our way down to state. I just believe I have one more slide here for you folks, so try it out. So additional Chapter 115 assistance, just bringing it to your attention, it's not affecting the budget in any way, shape, or form, but they all got that lovely 40% increase, I mean, 5.9% increase in the Social Security from over 40 years ago. The lovely thing that they did was is they decided to jump up their Medicare Part B by $25 more. So because of what was going on and everything going, they did some calculations up to the Department of Veteran Services, and they are giving an additional semi, between January and June of this year, right now, they are giving the veterans, anybody that's on Chapter 115, an additional $79 per month. Just so you know, that's a supplement to it, and it's, and I believe we've already received the monies for it, they're reimbursing us 100% of that versus 75%. So that's why, I just wanted to, you know, let you know what's going on with that, but it's not affecting the budget, it's not 75% reimbursable, it's 100%. So the Veterans Department therefore is a level-funded budget for FY '23, and any questions?
Do we have questions? Members of the board?
No question, just a statement.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Thank you. I know that this isn't just a job for you. Your heart's in it, and it shows. Thank you.
Any other questions of the board? Questions of the finance committee? Tough to ask on a level service. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. All right. Next, we have elder services. I'll look to Mr. Gilberto for this. Sure. Double duty as our technician, RIT technician and TA.
Thank you. So just a quick update, and this is probably more a programmatic update than a budget update for the department. And I did see Ms. Greer here, as she is. Sherry from the senior center is here, and I know Ms. Tilton, who many of you know, could not join us this evening, but she did send her regards. She was not, unfortunately, not able to make it due to another committee meeting. The budget that you see before you was the budget that was submitted by Mrs. Crennig Prior to her retirement, and the major changes in that budget are driven by what would have been an increase associated with cost of living in the director's position to a $70,000 salary, so that's in the department headline, and then also non-union wages and the clerical wages associated with the settled collective bargaining for a grand total amongst all three lines of $8,585. Since that time, we've, we're moving forward with a posting for the position for the vacancy created by Mary's retirement, and so this week we will be advertising position for a director of elder services with a salary for a range of $75,000 to $85,000. So that will be an increase in the position designed to align with where we believe the market is at with regard to the, to the position. Moving forward in the department, the things I will just note is that Susan and Sherry continue to sort of keep things moving forward down there, including the return of folks in person at the center, so I just want to recognize them for their efforts while we go through this process, and that will hopefully bring to resolution soon. I'll be speaking later on in the, this evening as well. I know that our desire is also to proceed fulfilling the position of director of public services, which will also concurrently be advertised as well, so we're just trying not to waste too much time by advertising at the same time, so I would just ask the community to keep an eye on for that. And I expect there to be more to come, if not at the June town meeting, and the follow-up regarding to the budget in the Elder Services Department, but otherwise, we see it's a fairly even rollover of that budget for the time being, other than the change in the budget. And I would just add, I got some nice commentary with regard to the activities of the department over the past year. All of you may know, somebody may know, but all of you should know, that the department was directly involved, including Sherry and Susan herself and Mary, placing phone calls for folks when the vaccination clinics opened up in the late winter and early spring of 2021. They were directly involved in that activity. I want to thank them for that. They have been assisting seniors on a walk-in basis by telephone, by delivery to their homes as well when needed. So those services do continue, and they have been slowly opening things back up, and I believe that that will be the explanation as we move forward and filling the position. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Any questions of the board? Any questions of the finance committee? Pretty straightforward. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Next is library. Services. Oh, my word. This is Ford coming. Yeah. I'm sorry. I, I, I should put my glasses on. I put a check mark in it. It looks like it's in the middle, and it really isn't. Miss, how could I forget? I look forward to this one every year.
I just wonder if they're talking.
Yes. Oh, here we go.
Yes. How do you know? Thank you.
For anyone who does not know me, I'm Dan Ford. I'm the Director of Youth Services. I will try to make this as brief as possible. Can everyone understand? I mean, I can take this all while I'm still here.
It's up to you.
Okay. If you can hear me, that's okay. Okay. So I also have a level budget, yes, per se, except for I am asking for an assistant. Again, third time's a charm, fingers crossed. It is a non-benefit part-time position. So as requested, I'm not going to be discussing any of our accomplishments or highlights. I'm going to be more discussing kind of our goals and what we're looking forward to, how we want to try to make that happen. Sorry. I know what I did. All right. So when I think of the future, I ask myself some questions. What have we learned in the last two years? And one of those things is that the dire need to, sorry, the dire need to prioritize mental health, which honestly, I've always done anyway. The second is the importance of messaging, which again, is something that I pride myself on, you know? The message that I... a cut in the term we have, and half of us identifying and experiencing loneliness. So we think, okay, what, what's the big deal? significantly increases the risk of mental health issues or problems, specifically anxiety and depression. We think to ourselves, okay, what, what does that mean? When we look at the effects of loneliness, there's some pretty concerning things. It can increase the levels of cortisol, restless sleep, headaches, other explained apes and pains, negative outlook, anxiety, depression, increased substance use, all, a whole slew of really risky, unwanted things. So then we go into anxiety. Anxiety is a very natural thing for a lot of us. We get up in front of people, we talk, we get nervous, that's very natural, that's a very normal response. What isn't is when we have very irrational, unreasonable fears of everyday things, and unfortunately, seven point one percent of children have been diagnosed with anxiety between the ages of three and seventeen. That's four point four million children. So this has a lot of information, okay, so we'll, I'll quickly go through it. Um, it's discussing depression and substance use. Mental Health America does an annual survey or annual, they collect data addressing these different issues. We're touching upon four topics. The first one being the number of youth experiencing at least one major depressive episode, which is bigger than the blues, it's, it's a disorder that causes a persistent feeling of sadness and loss of interest. The next item is number of youth experiencing at least one severe MDE, which is over two point five million U.S. youths. The next one is youth experiencing substance use disorder, and then the last one, which is probably the most staggering to me, is the amount of kids who did not receive mental health services. So you'll see through this list, it's, I've broken it down to Massachusetts, where Massachusetts is ranked, and then the percentage that they have of youth, and then the number of youth. If you go through, for the first one, Massachusetts ranks twenty-second in the United States at thirteen point eight-six percent of youth who have experienced at least one major depressive episode. That's sixty-seven thousand youth in Massachusetts, that is more than the entire town of April. The next one, the number of youth experiencing at least one severe major depressive episode. Again, Massachusetts ranked tenth with eight point five percent, that's forty thousand youth, again, the size of this town of Boomer. The third is with substance use, ranked twenty-second with three point nine percent, that's nineteen thousand youth in Massachusetts who have experienced substance use disorder, nineteen thousand youth, that's the size of Newbury Court. And then the last is the number of youth who did not receive medical treatment here in Massachusetts. Massachusetts was ranked thirty-ninth with sixty-one point two percent of youth who did not receive treatment, that's forty-one thousand youth, that's the size of Leavenstair. These are pretty staggering numbers, so I'm going to bring it a little closer to us. North Reading. Going by the census.gov, with the two thousand eighteen North Reading's population was fifteen thousand seven hundred and ten. According to that report, twenty-one point eight percent were under the age of eighteen, essentially youth, so that brings it to the number of three thousand four hundred and twenty-five. Using those same statistics and percentages, that means North Reading youth, there are four hundred and seventy-five North Reading youth who have experienced a major depressive episode, another two hundred and ninety-one who experienced a severe one, a hundred and thirty-four North Reading youth who have experienced substance use disorder, and four hundred and sixty-nine, which is the sixty-one point two percent of youth that have experienced the major depressive experience, or episode, I'm sorry, not receiving treatment, which essentially is one in three youth were receiving treatment. So these are the numbers none of us want to think about, we don't want to talk about, but they're important. Forty-seven thousand five hundred and eleven people died in, in the United States in two thousand nineteen by suicide. Again, to give that a bit of perspective, Fenway Park seats thirty-seven thousand people. So more, think of Fenway Park being full and another ten thousand people standing outside, that is the amount of Americans that died by suicide in two thousand nineteen. Suicide is the leading cause of death for fifteen and sixteen-year-olds, American kids. It's the second-leading cause for ten-to-thirty-four-year-olds. This circle in the middle, which I, I think is, they're all meaningful, but based on the most recent youth risk behavior survey from two thousand nineteen, eight point nine percent of ninth-through-twelve graders made at least one attempt of suicide in the past twelve months. So basing that on, say, North Reading High School, on an average of two hundred kids per class, that would be eight hundred kids, that's seventy-one, oh, excuse me, seventy-one North Reading High School students who attempted suicide in the last year. On average, there are a hundred and thirty suicides per day, that's more than five per year. So what time do we start tonight's meeting? Seven?
Thirty.
Okay. So at this point, that's what, almost seven people who have died by suicide. The good news, there are practical strategies for global positive mental health. And the even better news, Youth Services are doing all of them. We are ensuring that youth know that there are people who, who care about them, and we make sure they know who they are. We create opportunities for social connection for youth of all ages. We encourage youth to find activities structured on purpose, we prioritize social reconnection through programming and fun activities. And again, the last, and probably one of the most important, we send very clear positive messaging of promoting mental health and well-being. So again, we talk about messaging, it's simple, it's a sending and processing of communications and information. It's equally as important as all of this other information that I'm giving you, because we have this information, we know it, but what are we doing with it? And not only what are we doing with it, what message are we sending to our youth? If we have this information, it's imperative that we're sending a message to our youth that we care, that they're relevant, that we consider and prioritize their needs. So FY twenty-twenty-three goal for Youth Services is to send a clear message to every community member, young and old, that they deserve and can have a sense of belonging in North Reading. The one missing piece, manpower. A team of one can only do so much. I have a proven success record, I, I've, I've done everything that I can, and I strive to do more, but there's no denying it, more manpower enables the department to reach more kids and to support more kids. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes. Questions of the board, from the board? Mr. Wallner.
I'm just, uh, because I know you've requested this before, and, you know, we all really appreciate what you're doing, so there's no doubt about that. I'm just wondering, you know, um, is there any way you can get volunteers to help you do, um, some of the activities that you need help with? Is there, because it seems like there's a lot of people who are interested in this topic that would like to help out if they could, and I don't know as an alternative, is that, is that a way you could spread the load out without necessarily hiring somebody? Because let's say we don't, let's say we don't have a position, is there a workaround that would help you get to what you want to achieve to a volunteer effort?
So yes, in theory, I mean, I've, I've actually started creating, um, with my Youth Services Committee, almost directorships, and I've created, um, we're, I'm trying to tap into their strengths, because the reality is not everyone's interested in going and facilitating a youth group, and to be quite honest with you, not everyone is equipped to go facilitate a youth group. So I'm trying to tap into the needs of the department and then the strengths of my committee members, and the reality is, a lot of those committee members are full-time workers, they're, they're volunteers, so, again, a lot of the programming, if I'm looking for manpower to help with the programming, it's afternoons. I've toyed with the idea of trying to bring in and develop a, a volunteer base, um, but to be very honest with you, a lot of time and energy goes into that as well. I'm embedding them, supervising them, having them in corps, so there's also a certain level of liability that comes with that as well, that we, we need sustainably to consider. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, it just, yeah.
You, Mr. Wall, there actually already is a team of, uh, Youth Services Committee that offers assistance, but as Mrs. Ford said, they're, they're, you know, their assistance is, is limited to, you know, kind of somewhat of an oversight, and then maybe putting some ideas together, or maybe participating in running some of the events that, that Youth Services runs, but it sounds to me like what you are seeking, which you've requested previously, is just the person in the seat every day with the director, being able to, you know, expand upon the, the services and the outreach that's going on, so.
So I'll just, I'll just say, it, it seems like our youth are under major stress, I have, I think many people see that, I think that, you know, the COVID pandemic has definitely pushed that even more to the edge, and I don't see, um, an easy path for them after this point. So you getting assistance, in my mind, is a really strong, powerful thing, and, uh, if there is a way to problem-solve and try to find more volunteers to help you actually do this with an assistant, I think it'd be, expanding your group one way or another would be a good thing, and at least I'd be happy to offer my help, you know, to try to problem-solve that, but I think you getting an assistant is a really good idea, and I think our kids need it, there's a lot of kids who don't do sports, don't do other things, they need you.
And those, and those are the kids that, realistically, what, exactly, it's the kids who are falling through the cracks.
Right, I agree. My opinion, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the Finance Committee? No? I do have a question, so in the budget, you put in a figure of twenty-five thousand for that assistant, am I reading that correctly?
I, I did, yes.
And you said it's a non, it's a non-benefited, so how many hours would that, would you be expecting that position, part-time, obviously? Nineteen hours, fifteen hours?
I was going to say, I would say between fifteen and nineteen hours. So, and I, I definitely, I don't necessarily need somebody to answer the phone, I, I, in my mind, the position would be more a right-hand man or woman as far as who can facilitate program, who can brainstorm program, who, um, you know, to be honest with you, would also possibly do go run programming that frees me up to do some of the other departmental stuff that I'm not able to prioritize, like researching grants and, and stuff like that, so it would, it would enable the director to focus on more director-like roles that right now often get, have to be backburnered, because I'm creating programming, doing all of the logistics, facilitating the programming, um, you know, there's lots of layers to it, it's more than, hey guys, let's go, you know, to Gibson Turber Park and have a kickball game, there's lots of layers to it that I don't think people really get, never mind the fact, there's lots of times where some sort of crisis or emergency comes up, and now I'm in a position that I have to make a choice between meeting the needs of one hot, you know, proven risk youth who needs maybe one-on-one individual attention, and then potentially, depending on when that crisis occurs, if it's during the time of a program, I then am forced to make a decision on how I meet that individual's needs while also still facilitating the program.
I had a couple of follow-up questions to you. I know in the slides you were talking about the, the survey, and I know the surveys are, at least from the communications from the school, the surveys are voluntary, and they let the parents know in advance, and they're not, um, they're not collect, they're keeping the data confidential, and it's optional for the student to participate, as well as it's optional if the parent doesn't want their student to participate, the parent can opt them out, based on the school department's communications to the parents. Do you have a sense of how many of our students are participating confidentially in the survey voluntarily, you know, in, by the numbers from which you derive the statistics?
So again, any of the numbers came from websites, and it came from the Mental Health America, CDC, I didn't, I was not able to use any local information, again, I gathered information by the census.gov with our population, and then used Massachusetts statistics to then. With that being said, I hang out with a lot of youth. There are a lot of them who are struggling and are feeling like their needs are not being met, um, and the amount of pressure that we put on our youth, whether it's academically, from a sports perspective, um, our, our kids do a lot of pressure, again, never mind that any outliers that are potentially falling through the cracks.
That leads me to my, my next couple of questions, just with regard to your department's work. I know, um, Dr. Daley and the School Department have really zoned in, um, really laser-focused in on this issue, and trying to tend to the mental health of the students, and I know that they have added adjustment counselors who are just doing a tremendous, tremendous work with not just the at-risk students, but the non-at-risk students who need to go and speak with them for, for assistance, for any myriad of reasons why they might have one of those episodes. So I, I'm wondering, do you, in, in your work, do you interact with the adjustment counselors?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, is that how you, and then my second question to that is, they have adjustment counselors for both middle school and high school, and the school administration has been working on getting more mental health staffing because of the, you know, the rise in that sort of need that's being demonstrated by the students. Do you have a sense of how many middle schoolers are going to your programs, and how many high schoolers are going to your programs, and have you seen a number of members or participants increase?
Um, I'll be honest, I don't have those numbers in front of me, because I didn't come prepared to discuss my programming specifically, so I do apologize, I can certainly get to those numbers. With that being said, I work quite closely with both of the new adjustment counselors through the Coalition, I'm the Chair of the Coalition, and they both actually, they're now both members of the Coalition, which is fantastic, I'm very proud of, in the last probably two years especially, we've, um, formed a lot of great partnerships, and we as a town are working, we're partnering with the school systems more and more every single day. And again, it, they are doing everything they can, and the reality is, in the school setting, there's still a lot of other things that they need to be worrying about besides mental health, and even when it's their utmost priority, it's still competing with a lot of other things. So there's that, um, you know, so yeah, I do know that they're very, very committed, and they recognize the need. I, I would say that yes, I've seen definitely an increase in the high schoolers, um, and I, the middle school, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with you, during COVID, when COVID first hit, and I, I transitioned virtually, I had a really, um, a high level of participation. I'll be honest with you, it's kind of petered out, like, a lot of things as the further COVID went on, because everyone's, everyone's zoomed out, and as a mother, I, I know, by the time my kid gets out of school at the end of the day, the lesson in the world that I'm encouraging them to do is now get on another Zoom call to, you know, play Family Feud with Youth Services. So definitely in the less sense, we've been able to return to in-person programming. I'm seeing an increase in already just this, this spring, I'm already seeing, I sent over these other the other day, and I'm already seeing so many more people sign up, because I've also been very limited for space. Even pre, pre-COVID, I, I have to beg, borrow, and steal space to run programming, so, um, you know, during COVID and being... So, you know, during COVID and being virtual, it was challenging. And then even when I do have the option of being in person, I then need to find space to run that for a while. I don't necessarily think that answered your question.
Yeah, I think it helps to know whether the programming is generating interest sufficient to grow the participation base or whether it isn't. And I think that also helps just inform us on whether, you know, there is a need for an assistant. So I think if you don't mind supplementing, that would be helpful to just know the numbers.
Okay.
You know, how many, you know, just on average, how many middle schoolers and how many programs, you know, that you run. I see it, but I don't know if everyone here is, I see the tremendous job that you do just with your messaging and with getting the word out on all of the different things. And the Coalition is just outstanding in terms of the content and the training and the helpful things that they're doing for the kids and for the parents. So I see that work. I just don't know if everybody else does, but I do really appreciate everything that you are doing. And I think it would be a great, if we could find the money in the budget, I think it would be a great help to you to just expanding that. I think, I think if you had the opportunity to expand it, more likely than not, you'd have greater participation, you know, not just zoning in on the at-risk, but I think if you could just grow the program to where it's, you know, something that people just want to go to, to just be a part of it, you know. So I think that if it's something that we could find the money, I think it would be well worth it, well worth the $25,000. But yeah, if you could get us the figures, I think that that would be great. That'd be helpful.
I can say, pre-pandemic, pre-COVID, my numbers were growing significantly. Every single season, it was increasing significantly. Needless to say, like everything else, the pandemic has had its direct impact, but I will certainly get you numbers.
And you've had to pivot to the nature of the things that you're doing and how you're ministering to the youth. And I think we understand that. We understand that too, so. All right. Are we all... Oh, Mr. Wall?
Yeah, just a quick, like even if the numbers have gone down, it actually concerns me more because it means kids have stopped asking or think there's an opportunity for them. That they've just gone silent and that would be even worse because getting them to reach up and ask for help or participate would be even less. So if the numbers are down a lot, I'd be actually really concerned.
Because that's pretty indicative that kids are suffering inside. It's not, this isn't to be, kids are suffering. It's just the resources we're providing for that suffering.
Yeah.
For sure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with that. As liaison, I see, just like I said with Mrs. Magner, I see your heart is always there. And I know how hard it was with COVID and seeing all those numbers drop and you're almost having to start over again to get these kids back. So just, I just wanted to say that, that I know, I feel your heart in it whenever you're speaking about whatever it is you're doing and trying to get whatever kids you can get in there, so thank you.
And we know your effort is team-oriented with all the people that you're working with in the school department and on CIT and on Youth Services, so we really appreciate that. Thank you. All set? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Ford. All right, now the library. Mrs. Keller. It's another fan favorite, the library. Mr. Gilberto, are we all set? Just wanted to make sure that you are audible, that's all. All right, welcome, Mrs. Keller.
Thank you very much. As you know, my name is Sharad Keller. I'm the director of the Miller Library. I want to thank you so much for helping me tonight to present our budget. Really glad to come through, our new assistant director, his name is Howard Dixon. And today's his first day, so.
Well done. Nice. Welcome.
I'm thrilled to have him. The birthday was a big success, so we're looking forward to it.
Very much looking forward to working here.
Great. Well, welcome.
This is a quick presentation. So the FY '23 budget request this year, it does meet the MAR, which is a municipal preparation requirement to be a certified library, which is very important to have certified library in your town, to be able to loan out materials, to be an fraud people to be able to, our residents to be able to borrow from the other 36 libraries in this consortium. So it's very important to be certified. And this budget request does meet the MAR. The two increases that we are asking for this year, the first one is a new position, the Community Services and Programming Librarian, and I will explain that on a separate slide. And the other is for electronic subscriptions, e-content and renewal increases. That covers Overdrive, which is audiobooks and ebooks. And we've seen an incredible increase through COVID. People who hadn't done, using Overdrive or hadn't looked at ebooks or audiobooks really started taking advantage of it. So the consortium, which is 36 libraries, knew that we have to make sure that we put more money into that so it would decrease the wait times and customer service. So they did a formula depending on population and usage and that shows the increase that we will have if this is approved for e-content for next year. So if I could just quickly talk about the Community Services and Programming Librarian position, I'm hoping that the fifth time is a charm because we've asked for this five years, five years in a row. But what we're trying to do with this position, and the majority of libraries now have this position so important, is breaking down the barriers to service, which is what we're trying to do. When someone comes to the library, we are ready. We have everything in place. We are programming. We have assistance for technology, books, everything, DVD's, programming genealogy clubs. But what if you can't get to the library and there are a lot of people who cannot get to the library? So what this does is it allows people who have challenges, maybe they aren't able to drive transportation, it's difficult, or physical challenges, they can't get there, we want to be able to provide services to them as well. And if you look at last fall's age-friendly survey, it clearly showed that writing has a rapidly growing senior demographic. So whether it is physical challenges, like I said, limited transportation, or any challenges that prevent people from fully accessing library services, this person's position would be to make sure that those people do not fall through the cracks. So the responsibility is to, the position is to hold. It would be to develop outreach programs, working with schools, going to local events, establishing home-on service to deliver things to people, any items to people, also working with the senior center, which we've already been doing, but we're going to increase that as well. And then the nursing homes, so if this person could be out there and be providing services to people who can't get to the library. The other part of it is the programming part, that we have been doing programming before COVID. Before COVID, we've had these incredible programs in the library activity room with 100 people attending, whether it was an author visit or educational program. During COVID, we collaborated with other libraries, more boosted our own, and we did over 120 virtual programs. So we did something for everyone, whether it was authors, author visits, travel, genealogy, climate initiatives, social justice, we just, we did programs, which is really something for everyone, trying to be inclusive. However, now that we're on the, hopefully outside of pandemic and in-person program is going to start again, we have surveyed patrons and a lot of them love the idea of the virtual programs because they can be home watching them and, you know, especially in the winter when it's dark. So they're asking for a hybrid. So the majority of libraries that work with now are going to have to do both, the virtual programs and the in-person program. So we, it is beyond a full-time position. Staff, myself, we've all been trying to do the programming, but it's just not sustainable because we're building open and people coming in and trying to introduce that. So we have open for this position, so we really, really provide, really needed services with community. And I'm just going to plug in just the last slide. We have a library of things, which we have started, very popular in libraries, and it is a collection of non-traditional items, things that people just need to use one time and maybe, you know, can't afford, I don't want to spend the money, don't want to waste by buying things and not using them. So what it does is we have 21 currently, and what I keep adding is people give us ideas or things. And we get lots and lots and lots of suggestions, but we want to look at what this town, what the community needs are, what someone may use. All you need is your library card to be able to check out any of these things. And very quickly, one is a halo bolt, so if your car breaks down, charge it, a metal detector, a shredder, a tax dime. We have 10 mobile hotspots that you can use, you take it on vacation with you, or if you don't have Wi-Fi at home, which not everyone does have Wi-Fi at home, we have these 10 hotspots. We have a sewing machine, a karaoke machine, and a car diagnostics scanner. And this is just a few items. We have 21 items, and as we see things and there's a need, we're going to add to that collection. And that is the goal. The goal is to be able to provide services in a non-traditional way, to save people money. Pretty excited to build out as well. So that is the quick presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and for the requested position, it looks like you put, is it $43,000?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. I should put my glasses on. $53,000 for that request.
Finance was like raising their eyebrows.
All right, yes, okay. And that's a full-time?
Yes, it is.
Expect that to be a full-time position?
Full-time position, yes.
All right, are there any questions? Questions from the board? None? Questions from the finance committee?
Don't have to stood or bad.
It's karaoke night.
Yes, so I'm there.
Yeah, so how many full-time positions do you have now or full-time appointments? How's your staff?
We have five. We're still short currently, full-time kind of circulation, so when that is full, we have five full-time and eight part-time staff.
Five full-time, eight part-time. But we're short one right now?
Yes. It's already budgeted, we just haven't built it yet.
Sorry.
It's budgeted for, we just haven't built it yet. We just go as director and I'll build us a position.
And are you seeing, you know, the things that they'd be working on? Are you seeing an increase in volume of requests for that type of, the things they'd be working on? Have you seen a steady increase over the last five years or?
Yeah, as far as programming and...
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. The expectation for our town is to have programming and to bring in quality programming. And just again, as explained, that whole process, you have to go out and preview something and then figure out the funding for it and then market it and then bring it in and then actually facilitate it that evening. It's just, it's a lot of work and it needs to be done right. And you need to pick the programs that are right for our community. So we need someone who will vote for the community, make sure they know what kind of things the town is interested in. And as far as the other part of it, the outreach, we just, the town is something that we could really benefit from. Like we said, there are a lot of seniors and you don't have to just be a senior to have outreach services, it's something that's key, being able to go out at the time. Or it could be, for whatever reason, we could just extend it to senior centers and nursing homes and just be able to bring our services to the library to people who can't get there. And is it, there is a demand, there is a request, constantly getting a request for home-on services and we're not able to do it?
That'd be good to see the breakdown of those requests if you have them. You know, that would be a good number, I'd like to see, you know. You get requests, I don't know if you tally and mark them.
I was gonna say, I can tell you that we get a lot of requests. I know, we don't tally, but it has absolutely increased, yeah.
You may want to tally.
I don't know, quantify it, right?
You may want to tally in case you have to ask for this again next year. You know, a little bit more, might be, I don't know, stats matter, you know?
No, I understand that, yes.
Try to help you out. It seems important. And with my family, we're taking advantage of all your things you have to offer. Goggles been the latest thing, you know, so thanks for staying up to date.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to commend the effort that was put into the 9/11 anniversary and the display that was there as well. I know from visiting on the morning of, that we had the ceremony, the fire police, that this staff told me that you were instrumental in getting that to be shown at the library. So, and I think those are the type of things that are also important for our history and for our community, to see those things as much as the other programming that you do. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'd also say thank you to the staff because we've always been, and we understand that, and we work the best we can, but during the time we've been down a couple of positions and with the pandemic, the rules change and we're always trying to evolve and seamless, provide seamless customer service. And everyone's worked really, really hard, really taken on jobs that they had never done before and, you know, maybe you're like, and everyone has done it because they know how important, you know, being able to, in our little part of the world, we feel like we make a small difference. The staff's worked really hard.
It's kind of expanded to be a hub for the community. It really has, and your messaging is great. Your social media messaging is fantastic. It's a good broad outreach, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. All right, so we have, next up is conservation. Who do we have here for that? Oh, Ms. Ford, wonderful.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The chair of the Conservation Commission is out of town and Leah, our conservation agent, is on vacation until the 23rd of March. So there are no changes within the conservation budget. There actually is a decrease due to the filling of the part-time position that recently just took place in Millgrander. The individual that held that job moved on to be the Board of Health's administrative assistant, so taking a full-time position. So this individual came in at a lower step than that employee was making. So we reviewed the budget with Leah, the town administrator, and myself to make sure that there was no changes necessary in regards to her services, that she provides the town under professional services engineering. And she said not at this time and that we were, you know, in line with the budget figures.
Thank you. Questions? Any questions from the finance committee? Pretty straightforward. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, I'm kind of relying on you in case Mr. Johnson has any questions. I'll have to, I haven't seen any hand raised yet.
I have been monitoring and I haven't asked any hand raised or any other, any other activity to indicate questions.
All right. And we're all set? Okay, Board of Health, we have Mr. Bracy. Busy year for you this year. Another busy year, actually. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. At the request of the town, for all the department heads, the key, our presentation reviewed, I will certainly do so. And I will just, I did send out a packet with a lot of COVID-19 information, updated information for the select board. Please feel free to look at that at your leisure if you have any questions at the end. I'm more than happy to answer those questions. I'm more than happy to meet with any select board member individually if they have outside questions pertaining to COVID. I'm gonna jump right into the Board of Health budget. We did have some increases under the line item of personal services. It was under administration, 11.2%. That increase was contractual agreements with the Health Director and the new administrative assistant that the Youth Finance Director just mentioned. Under purchase services, there was an increase of 1.5%. That was due to an increase in mosquito control, which we have a contract every year with Eastern Hillsex Patrol that we use here in the community. The one line item that we did add in here under personal services was environmental help for the sum of $60,000, and I'll just explain the reasonings for that. Over the last two or three years, the department, along with the Department of the Town Administrator of Public Safety, have received feedback from the mental and business community, homeowners, railers, licensed installers, that based on extenuating factors, there has been an increased demand... installers, that based on extenuating factors, there has been an increased demand for additional public health services in the area of environmental health. In order for us to meet those demands, inspections, we need, more needs to be done, more frequent inspections than the department is able to do. Based on the current demands, having a full-time environmental support staff would eliminate the need for contractual services for inspections, and would allow the Health Department to accommodate the residential business community in a more timely and efficient manner. Therefore, the department is respectfully requesting allocation of FY '23 Board of Health budget for one full-time support staff for the field of environmental health.
What is that specifically?
So that would be specifically an onsite sewage disposal system inspector, who would go out and do soil testing and field inspections in the field of town.
How much does that save on the other side of your budget for going to outside contractors?
Well, it doesn't save anything. We're asking for an additional $60,000. We still have a line item of 13, too, for plan review. The plan and the thought process is to weed that out over the next coming years, so that that one full-time person will be able to capture both of those duties.
Okay, so right now, there's no diminution in that line item, because you need to whittle that down. All right. Questions? Questions from the board? Questions from the finance committee? Pretty straightforward. No questions? Thank you. Thank you. Code enforcement. Code enforcement, ZVA. Welcome, Mr. Noel. How are you doing? Will yours be shorter than Mr. Bracy's?
No.
All right.
I'm going to go with four. Make it short.
Twelve slides?
Twelve slides. That's not bad. It's got to go through. Who do you need all?
Good evening.
First off, the Jerry Noel Building Division. This is just the presentation, just the, it just basically shows the overview of what I'm going to be explaining to you. Building Department's mission, Building Department's mission is to protect the lives and the safety of residents and visitors, businesses with implementation of proper construction methods, or as the state builds the course. And it goes on to tell you how many buildings roughly are within the town in our spreading, which is a little over 6,300. And we also oversee FY '21 CMR, which is about 88. Notable achievements and growth in 2021, we had 2,333 properties the last calendar year. Building Department collected $993,000. That is $500,000, $400,000, $25,000 more than the previous. We had a total of 20 certificates of occupancies issued to new homes. Eleven of those were new homes. Nine of those were raised and rebuilt. Fifty of those certificates of occupancies were for polka. And the adoption of the online permitting system allows the full transparency, and it's a fantastic system. We're liking it so far. Performance work for the board indicates, this basically just spells out what the department is currently comprised of. Budget statement, this shows that plumbing and gas inspector, we increased that roughly to $4,200 this year to increase their pays. They were, plumbing and gas inspectors were at $23 and $21 an hour. We increased their pays to $27 and $25 an hour. We're asking for a per diem inspector, and that's to reinstate the position in which we had previously in 2019, I think 2020 as well, when inspected to settle. This is to currently, it's to sustain the growth that we have. And I can explain that in this, in the next slide. We decreased the training and education, the resume. The phone did increase because it was always historically higher. Office supplies decreased due to permitting system. Sealer and weights and measures increased due to state requirements. Emergency callouts, we increased that from $25 an hour to $35 an hour. That's basically what the industry standards are. ZVA advertising, we increased to $900. It's been incredible for home businesses, and unfortunately, some denied, quite a few denied or made. And ZVA postage increased to $900 due to the aforementioned. Getting back to the $20,000, which I'm asking for, for a per diem building inspector. As you can see, on bottom left, it shows 2019, we had 671 building permits. That's just building permits only. 2020, we had 824. This past year, we had 979. It's taxing, you know, to try to do that, especially with COVID. COVID brought on a whole dimension of zoning enforcement. The zoning enforcement just, I am looking at probably two to three, maybe four zoning infractions per week. And before they get to the next level, which is my superiors, I basically take care of them before they get there. And it's a lot of work. The permits and inspection revenue. We had a total increase in revenue of $425,000 from the previous year. The Building Department collected $993,000. We received the weights and measures, $13,585. Total fees collected, $1,6,802. This basically shows the breakdown of the building department. The green is, the green is the building. Building permits, yellow is just the gas, which is 12%. Plumbing is 13% in gray. The blue is the electrical, 27%. And orange is 6%, HVAC. This shows the amount of building permits from 2020, from 824 to 979. Electrical, 464 to 634. Plumbing, 304 to 310. Gas, 240 to 286. HVAC, 103 to 124. Inspections. As you can see, on the building side, we did 1,377 inspections in 2020. This past year, we did 1,904 inspections. Electrical was 1,238, and in 2021, it was 1,163. Now, one of the reasons why there's 1,163, it's less than what it was, is the electrical inspector has, when you perform inspection on a new home, you go in there pretty much once, and you're doing it wrong. Then you're going on a second time, you're doing it fine. Now, when you're going through something that's rehab, now, the electrical inspector has to go in there a heck of a lot more. So we've had a lot of new construction this year. So that basically took the, inspections, the electrical inspector down a bit. In 2020, for plumbing, we did 701. This past year, 704. In 2020, gas, 386. This past year, 405. HVAC, 2020, 203. This past year, 248. As you can see, it's an increase. Goals and objectives, secure our per diem so we can meet the growing needs of the community. Continue scanning all plans and documentation for uploading permitting system. Continue to be cost-effective and maximize staff efficiency. Sustain awareness for all the applicants regarding COVID changes that may affect their projects. Work with zoning board of appeals, ZVA, and others to help recognize the need of a new fee structure for different types of relief from the zone, from zoning bylaws. I can expound on that in a minute, if anyone would like me. Continue our zone enforcement, the zone bylaws, put emphasis on training, the assessment building inspector, reduce and use codes. Work closely with other departments in order to expedite the permitting process. And that's it? No? Any questions?
Questions? Questions on the board? None. Mr. Walner.
Just a quick question. You know, the dramatic increase, is that largely being driven by Martin's Landing, or is that?
No.
It's spread across?
Spread across, yeah. Now, we have, this year, we have 16 new, currently have 16 new homes going in. So it's, and that's just within the last six months.
And I know you're working on the accessory unit dwelling policy with CPC. Is that still in process at this point?
That is still in the process.
Look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Finance committee? Oh, any other questions? Finance committee questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Okay. That's it for this item on the agenda, I think. Okay, next order of business? Is the Thompson Plumbing, Pro Shop, and TCC Grill Change of Manager. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Dave Wilson, representing Thompson Country Club. Mario Ruiz is a longtime employee. We're making a transition from an employee who left our employ at the end of the year, Trevor Fuller, who'd been in place for about five years. So Mario's taking over that role as a food beverage manager, so we wanted to transition the name on the licensing to his name.
How many years has Mr. Ruiz worked there?
We have, like, five and a half, six, six years. Since the grill room.
He's been in charge of the kitchen operations since the grill room opened at Thompson, working for the prior managers, so he's pretty familiar with the whole operation. But, you know, he wasn't the primary person at that point.
Okay. Mr. Ruiz, where was that restaurant? Charlestown? Did you sell that alcohol there? It was an alcohol-free restaurant?
I was in charge, I was kitchen manager, and I've completed each kitchen, three years now, in charge of quarter delivery.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have any questions? See you later. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Harry Nutt, Mr. Chief Murphy, we're all set to vote on this?
Yeah, please, Bob. Nothing that could prevent him from standing up.
Perfect. All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the seasonal club, all alcohol license for Thompson Club Inc., TCC Grill, two mid iron drive from Trevor Fuller to Mario Ruiz.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those, all those in favor.
Aye.
Approved. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Is there a second motion?
Second one.
Second motion. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the seasonal club, wine and malt license for Thompson Club Inc., Pro Shop, two A, mid iron drive from Trevor Fuller to Mario Ruiz.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Yes, I know.
Aye.
Well, four. To approve.
See, I was sitting at this side. That's why you guys.
They're already signing it, that's why they're not paying attention. They're already signing them.
I'll share through you. There are four documents circulating for signature, two under the name of the old manager, two under the new, because it will be a renewal, but then it will also be an pending change of manager.
Yes, I both of those.
Got it, okay.
What about all these on the fees? Well, that's later, right?
Yes.
Okay, so our next order of business is the appointments to Youth Services and Recycling Committee. And do we have a?
No, seasonal. I have more.
Oh, didn't we just vote on seasonal?
No, but there's other stuff.
I'm sorry. Do we have other motions?
I have other motions. I have all kinds of stuff that we're going to do.
They just laughed. They're not even here.
They're all set.
Oh, they are?
These are other items.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, okay.
To want to increase participation in the adult beverages, I'm telling you, there will be more people here.
I say we get the karaoke machine from the library.
Use of town resources.
Okay. Do we have other motions?
Madam Chair, I move to renew the seasonal club wine and malt beverages license for Thompson Club Inc., DBA Pro Shop, two A, mid iron drive to expire November 30th, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have another motion, Mr. Studo?
Yeah, I do. Was there two more of these? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm just going to do all of them and then just send everything around, so you guys can sign them once, just to make it easier. Is that okay?
Madam Chair, I move to renew the seasonal club all alcohol license for Thompson Club Inc., DBA TCC Grill, two mid iron drives to expire December 31st, 2022, subject to all regulatory departments.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the general on-premise seasonal wine and malt beverages license for Golf Facilities Management Inc., DBA Hillview Snack Bar, to expire December 31st, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
My second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the common particular license for Thompson Club Inc., DBA TCC Grill, two mid iron drive to expire December 31st, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the common particular license for Golf Facilities Management Inc., DBA Hillview Snack Bar, to expire December 31st, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the transient vendor license for the sale of flowers, Christmas trees, et cetera, at 226 Main Street for Robert Connors, 58 Wyman Street, Uber Mass, to expire December 31st, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, we have, now we have our next order of business, which is the appointments to Youth Services and Recycling Committee, which, do we have any for Youth Services?
I'm not finding a citizen activity form on here.
They're, they're, I'm going to share through you.
They were provided, I think, the other day, right?
I saw one for the recycling. I didn't see the, yeah.
They're just separated.
I see Youth Services and the recycling.
Page 51?
It's a citizen activity form for Kathleen Logan, who's a candidate for Youth Services, and then they are separated. If you go after the legal bills, it's actually the others, it's the next activity form.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I might have that wrong.
Okay.
Before the legal bills.
Before.
And Thomas Kiselak, who was a candidate on paper for the zoning board of appeals, but also expanded his level of interest, and was referred, I believe, to the recycling committee for appointment as well. So those are two votes, I think.
Can we put them on both? It's a fabulous resume.
Do you want me to go?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to place the nomination, the following name for appointment to the Youth Services Committee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2024. There's one opening. Kathleen Logan. There's one opening, Kathleen Logan.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Mrs. Gonzalez, you're on Youth Services. Were you able to talk with the chair about?
I was.
Okay.
We did discuss it, and we're very happy to have Ms. Logan joining in.
Okay. This is a roll call name vote. Any further discussion? Mr. Walner.
Kathleen Logan.
Mr. Studo.
Kathleen Logan.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Kathleen Logan.
Manupelis Kathleen Logan.
Madam Chair, I move to place the nomination, the following name for appointment to the Recycling Committee for an indefinite term. There's four openings. Thomas Kiselak, let's say that again.
I second the motion, sorry.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Recycling Committee is Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah, so Mr. Kiselak joined into the meeting, the last meeting we had, just to kind of observe and see if he would be interested. And after the meeting, he said that he would like to join, so that was great. So we're happy to also have him joining the recycling.
So Mr. Kiselak is a, he works in patents, right? Mr. Gilberto, from his, from his citizen activity form, is that the same?
That's what I saw.
Yeah, kind of dangerous.
He listed his employer, and, and he has, it's well worth it to go look at the website because they interview him. They do an interview on the website, and he's just a phenomenal candidate. I would love to see us put him on, you know, other committees where we could utilize his, utilize his, yeah, utilize his expertise or just his background, so. But it's well worth it for the board to look, look at his interview, it was great.
Yeah, they're very, they're new to town, him and his wife, came from Texas.
From Texas, yes. And he's, I believe, on the form, he was sitting for the patent bar, but I think he might have already passed the patent bar. I'm not sure. But I'm pretty sure that either that's in process or, which is a very difficult endeavor. But his background is really interesting, the work that he's done. So I could easily see him being a value-added member of a number of different boards and committees, not the least of which is wastewater, just to be able to get some, get some other assistance on those. But recycling, okay, you know.
Hey, don't knock on recycling.
No, I know, because there's openings on it. So in any event, I would encourage my colleagues.
Some important things around here.
I would encourage my colleagues, but for the future, for the future, absolutely. But I would encourage my colleagues to look it up.
Compostings gonna be coming up.
So this is a name, a name, roll call, name vote. So it was motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Mr. Walner.
Thomas, and I think the name is Clayce?
Kiselak.
How do you pronounce it?
Kiselak.
We hope we're pronouncing it correctly.
Okay, Kiselak. Kiselak.
Kiselak, so.
I was Kiselak.
Mr. Studo, Mrs. Gonzalez. Thomas Kiselak, Manupelis Thomas Kiselak.
And O'Leary.
Oh. Now, we have the next order of business, which is the vote on the town auditor. Mr. Gilberto, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Madam Chair, I think we're still on a project, trying to schedule a virtual meeting with one of the candidates, and hopefully we're able to do so prior to the meeting, so we'll recommend holding off on the vote. We do have a meeting that props up between now and the next regular meeting. We may ask the board to reconsider any matter of opinion. We're looking at two candidates just for preference, based on our solicitation by our finance director a few weeks ago. So hopefully we'll be able to conclude that no later than the national meeting.
Okay. So we're holding off then on a vote for this meeting? We're gonna table the vote?
Yes.
All right? Okay. And are my colleagues in agreement with that? We don't even have a proffered candidate at this point, so there's not much we could do to vote on it. Okay. So we'll expect that for the next, next meeting?
At the latest, Madam Chair.
Okay. Next order of business, public comment. Would anyone like to speak?
I'm not seeing anything on the virtual portion of the email, Chair.
Okay. Next order of business is legal bills.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for January 2022 in the amount of $15,658.88 as follows. General, 519588. Labor, 325950. 20 Elm Street, 719550. Total, $15,658.88.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I have, I have one left, but you guys still gotta talk, so I won't read it. No, you looked at me, I have nothing left.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant another bill, and I saw one in the.
Well, I have bills, but none of the select board will take care of it for me.
We're at Town Administrators Report. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'm glad to introduce the board on this evening. The first is, as a follow-up to the information I provided to the board in my January 10th report, attached is a draft of potential comment that the town planner has written relative to the so-called M B T A communities changes. The planner will be at our next meeting, not only for the planning commission's budget presentation, but also to review this matter with the board. So there'll be much more to discuss at that point, but I would encourage you to take a look at the draft of that comment, which we will also forward and pack it for the next meeting. Second, I included a copy of an opinion letter from town council regarding the potential construction of a community center at the property on and near Ibsis River Park. I know this has been a matter that, for which has been a number of questions that have come up, and Attorney Eichmann has provided us a written opinion, which I have forwarded to the board in my written report, and will forward to some interested stakeholders over the course of the next few days. Third, I attached a copy of postings for three vacant positions that will begin being advertised this week. The first is the project manager grant coordinator position that I know we've been discussing in recent months. Second, the director of public services, which was approved by the select board in January. And the third, the director of elder services, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation. We will probably hold the applications for that third position until we get to the process for the second position, but didn't want to lose any ground. So I just encourage the community, keep an eye out. Certainly are looking for qualified candidates, both from within and without the community, and certainly will consider any and all qualified candidates, particularly those who may be in the community. Fourth, some may have noticed, in the building here, the D B W is conducting some painting to the interior of town hall. We intend to photograph the paintings on the front hallway out here to preserve them in a picture that could be mounted here in the town hall, but ultimately to paint the walls. They are in tough shape, as I think folks know. That won't happen right away, but I just want to alert the community to that because I know that folks are used to seeing them out there. And our goal is to document them with digital and printed images, and to hang a photograph here in the building where people can see them and know the history of this building, but hopefully to actually paint the hallway in the front. And then finally, there will be more brought up on this at the March 28th meeting, but we have, we have some news with regard to the operation of the function hall at the Hillview. And so the commission of D B W for us for the budget presentation will review that with them and with you on March 28th. So stay tuned. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilberto, is the planner coming to the March 28th, 28th meeting?
That was the plan, as we conclude budget hearings, planning commission's on that agenda.
Okay. Because aren't these, these comments are due by the, is it by the end of the month? Or is it?
I believe they were within the deadline for filing the comments. I did check that with her.
Yes.
And I believe the provision in the law required there to be some sort of a meeting or a hearing of advising the public of this change that has taken place. And the intention is to bring that up here at the select board meeting.
Yes.
So that it gets highlighted. You know, we, I think you know, and the members may know, we have a pretty aggressive zoning in the 40 yard district over where Polte and Edgewood are located, but unfortunately, it does not appear that that is sufficient to meet the criteria required. So we have options, including not complying with it, which some communities have chosen to do, and she can review that with us. I know of at least one nearby community that is basically saying, we're not going to try to comply because it's just too adversarial to the community, so.
Right. Because we're only in adjacent, we don't even have service here in the community, so we're only in adjacent community. But in terms of the comments that you're, you included, because of the efforts that have been made for housing stock increase here, I think another comment could be incorporated that there is no waiver provision, and I know it's not, I know it's intended to be, you know, prospective, not retrospective, but I think there should be some waiver of, you know, communities that have within the past maybe three years increased their housing stock to this, to this, to this purpose and to this goal. And, you know, that, I think that should, that should take place. And also, we don't really have service. We, you know, we had to set up our own transportation van, so we don't, we don't benefit, even though we're paying in the dues, so to speak. We don't really benefit from that payment. So what are we going to see in terms of service in this community if we're, you know, gonna engage in this zoning district or overlay district to comply? I know the end game is to get access to funds, but I'd like to us to know as a board, when we do hear the presentation, how much of those funds we've availed ourselves of previously? How much are we really gonna, would we really be expected to receive? And, and, you know, how much have we received in the past? Because this isn't new funding source, it's an existing funding source.
Correct.
So I'd like to know those things.
Certainly, I'll convey that to the town planner, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Walner?
Just a question, and maybe you said it, I might have missed it. So we're hiring the public services director, and we're also recruiting for the elder services director at the same time?
We are, but we're not intending to proceed with the hiring of the second one.
Until?
Until we hire.
The public safety will have a purse, that will have a say in that.
The public services director, that's correct. That's the intent.
That's what I didn't hear. Okay, that's, that's perfect. That makes sense, yeah. That would be like their first hire.
Yes. And we expect there'll be crossover, too, that maybe candidates that are duly qualified potentially, and we'll go through that process.
All right, thank you. If that's an important position, I think that would be great first hire for the public services director.
But are we looking here for personnel here that could serve in that role that we already have? Like mainly our fire chief, or, you know?
Public services?
This is that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're thinking.
I was thinking, I'm mixing it up.
You're thinking.
Oh, I'm mixing it up with public safety, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is that.
Not the new position.
New old position.
The new old position.
Yes, I'm so sorry about that. That, I was thinking back to the early presentation, and when you said public services, I said, oh my gosh, don't we have a little bit more time with?
We do, we do have time.
All right, okay, public safety, yes, that's great. Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry for the confusion.
It's okay, it's all right.
Any other questions?
No, that was the only question I had, thank you.
Board member reports?
I'm, I'm.
Mr. Studo? Board member reports?
No.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
No.
This is all said? And by the way, this is all the new business? Okay. I just have to say, make the announcement that Notorious, our own clerk's wonderful singing son, who's a member of, won the regional championship, and now they'll be going on to the national championship in New York. And from what I heard, it was an amazing show. These are the outliers. They have put in the time, they have put in the effort, they have been doing this for year after year after year after year. These are kids that started in their elementary and junior high and high school, so we're so very proud of them.